Like last time, I think last time we kept it pretty conversational. I think the slides were more just kind of, kind of be a prop for us to talk to a little bit as we go through. But with that said, I guess Leslie, is there anything else? Or Allison or anyone who's just kind of from staff side, anything to kick it off? Okay. So I'll flip through these slides pretty quick here, just as a reminder. So again, just looking at this of, trying to look at these so that they're not all in silos. It's one system, so remember the policy layer and then the regulatory tools to implement that and the CIP and programs. Really should see all these things as one organism here. And all the organs inside of it are all working together correctly. I think where localities get in trouble lots of times is they kind of think of policymaking and then they think of the zoning and kind of a different area and they don't necessarily go back to those policies there. So just really trying to, it has to, it has to work together. Again, I was going to talk about kind of the difference between horizontal and vertical consistency. And that's, we'll talk about that. So do these layers moving up and down, are they consistent with each other vertically? And then also horizontally? Are your ordinances consistent with your ordinances? Are your investments consistent with your investments? Are your policies consistent with your policies and so forth? Also going to just hit on a moralistic view on local government. I think there's a big difference between problems versus conditions and how we kind of call those two things out and why we fail and how we succeed in local government. So if you'll remember, we were kind of flipping through these. Hi Nigel, how you doing? We had this diagram really to emphasize that everything should really start around that comp plan. Comp plan is always a starting point. Occasionally we'll work with localities and they'll, they'll want to update their zoning ordinance first and then do their comp plan update. And I always tell them, whoa, whoa, whoa guys, like that's reverse. You got to start with the policy. Policy is trying to figure out what it is you want to do as a community. And then you figure out how you actually enforce it. So right here in the middle, that's where you figure out what are your policies? And then we're, we're going to start off really here on the zoning today and kind of how that helps implement the policies and how this should really be consistent with these other pieces too. So your regulations and your programs should all tie into your comp plan. So we hit on comp plans, we talked about the importance of the vision and the strategies. Again, keep in mind that a vision by itself is just a daydream. And strategies without a vision in place is a good way to waste time. So you need to have both those things together. You need to have a vision and then also have those strategies to implement it. So that's why, you know, again, most comp plans have this kind of vertical structure here. You have your goals and your objectives and your actions and really kind of trying to build and figure out what specifically is that you want to accomplish. So just flip through these kind of fast. Again, the comprehensive plan is your legislative to-do list and it really should be data-driven. Important that, you know, you pull from good data and good analysis to come up with those conclusions. We talked about that. We talked about how the, the future land use map is an essential part of your comp plan, an essential part of, of helping you make decisions. So any rezoning case, any conditional or special use permit, any investment with your CIP, you should really be looking at that future land use map. That's going to be the first thing you look at with many of those decisions. A good future land use map is one where you take a look at it and with just one glance, you have a good idea what the land use policies are. Again, just as a reminder of have a good-looking future land use map, but make sure to define those land use designations. I see that too often. There's a nice-looking map, there are these land use designations on the map and the key, but there's nothing that actually defines what those are. And that's when you start getting a little bit of trouble there with these applicants when they come in of making decisions, but your policies aren't well-defined. So it's hard to tell what your policy objectives really are. And again, you know, remembering there are differences between the different maps. I'll, we talked about that, I'll hit it on again. So zoning, okay. So zoning. Zoning, it's, it's part of your land use regulatory package here. Keep in mind that zoning is a law, like any other law. In fact, in a lot of localities, the zoning administrator carries a badge. They have a badge. I know Charlottesville, their zoning administrator has a badge that they have. Usually don't wear it around, but sometimes. I got a buddy who works out in one of the Dakotas and he, he is actually in the police department because it's seen as, this is law enforcement of, these are land use laws, the laws that apply to the land. We do get caught up quite a bit in laws that you'll see, you know, in Washington or Richmond. But for the most part, those laws that are passed are important, no doubt. I'm not arguing otherwise. But the most influential laws in our day-to-day lives happens here on the local level. This is where that happens. Because these are the laws that govern what you can and can't do on your property. They're not really doing that in Washington. They're not really doing that as much in Richmond sometimes. But it's on the local side here. So it's really, keep in that mind, it's a law, like any other law. If you violate the law, there are penalties tied to that. Also keeping in mind that staff are not the policymakers. Staff, they do not adopt the ordinances, they enforce them. So they have ministerial authority. Ministerial authority is just to fulfill the laws that are passed by the local legislature. So really kind of with that ministerial action there of fulfilling that, it's really only, it's up to the city council. They are the only ones that can amend the code. They're the only ones from Richmond given the authority to pass laws on the local level. Just keeping that in mind. When we talk about zoning, what does it regulate? It regulates use, intensity and bulk. So those three things, and I'll hit on each one of those. It does also implement or enforce other things too. So it's, it's those three things at its core, but other things as well. If you look at your phone, I've got four bars on my phone. I don't know what you all have in yours.
Mine's in the car.
Four as well, okay.
I've got three.
You've got three, uh-oh. So.
You must have sprained it.
No, it hasn't.
So part of that, that's zoning too. Because zoning regulates where telecommunications facilities go, how tall the structures are, where you can place them, how, how do you treat those? So that's part of zoning. Landscaping can be part of zoning. So really all those different pieces that go into it. But we're all kind of start from the top here and make our way down. Before we get into those three specific areas, also keeping in mind that zoning has a long history in the U.S. So if, if anyone ever says, an applicant comes in and says, well, wait a second, it's my property, you can't tell me what to do with my property. And I would say, well, there's over a hundred, well, there's about a hundred years of case law saying, it can. The first comprehensive zoning ordinance in America was 1916. That was New York City. If you want to know how large that zoning ordinance was, I think it was 16 pages, the first zoning ordinance for New York City. That sounds kind of ridiculous today, but so really, I love the history of zoning. We could spend ages talking about that, but it's not going to be as helpful to you as just kind of the framework here. So it, it has, it's backed up with over a century of case law. It is something that under the, the police power, under health, safety and welfare, local governments are allowed to do. And it's, was passed in 1920s through the state zoning enabling legislation that all the states eventually adopted that gives us the authority on the local level to adopt these, these laws and these ordinances. But keep in mind, these are laws. So when you think about that, as laws, they're almost like bills. And in that process, the planning commission, your major role here is to help deliberate on those, let's call them bills, of zoning ordinance changes, to review those, to deliberate and make sure that when the local legislature, council receives those, that it's been thoroughly thought out and how those laws are going to be applied, how they're written and the exact wording in those. So this is a political action when you adopt or amend a zoning regulation. I'll also make a note, Virginia is one of the very few states that's a really strict Dillon Rule state. Dillon Rule states are those where the local jurisdiction, you only have the authority that Richmond tells you you got. You don't have any other implied authorities unless it's just essential to local governance. It has to be explicitly listed in the state code. It has to be something that is, something that's kind of assumed to be just part of local government functioning. But here in Virginia, Richmond keeps a pretty tight, pretty tight control over what localities can and cannot do. So if you want to make a change to your local zoning code, first you have to make sure you have the enabling legislation in the state code. Interested in that state code of Virginia, section 15.2. So you go to that section 15.2 and that long section in there lays out all the things local governments can and can't do. If you go to the general assembly website and you click on laws, there's a link right there to the state code. So that's a good place to start. Just as a warning, if you go off somewhere, like let's go to, go to Maryland and you see the inclusionary zoning ordinance there in Montgomery County, you want to do that here, keep in mind that you might not be able to do it here according to the state code. Okay, so on, we said that zoning regulates three things. That's use, that's intensity and that's bulk. Use side, zoning ordinances really breaks it down into these three different categories. First off, your zoning code will list out those uses that are allowed by right. It's kind of like the green light of you can do it. That means that on that piece of property, that use that they want to fulfill on their, on their lot, it's legal. So staff has no authority to do anything else than what the code says. They only have ministerial authority. So if the police, if a police officer pulls you over and says, you know, I, I don't like a car. Ford is a bad brand, I'm going to give you a ticket for that. They can't do that. They, they can't just make up laws on the spot. They're there to fulfill the laws. So when you think of by right, that means that uses that are legal on your property and there's nothing you can do otherwise. Remember when I first got started in local government, I signed a site plan for a Walmart and a lot of people were fussing at me and saying, why'd you sign that site plan? And I had to tell them, I had no choice. The site plan met the laws of the local regulations. I legally couldn't, I legally had to sign that site plan. There's nothing I could have done. So we have those by right uses. Then we have our conditional uses, our conditional use permits or special use permits or special exceptions. Different terms, basically the same thing though. And that's where the code says that the use might be appropriate under that zoning, but there might be a case where it's not appropriate. There might be situations where we need to put some conditions on that. Good example, like home, home occupation. So if you want to have business in your home and let's say you fix, you fix lawn mowers. So if you just fix on a lawnmower like once every six months and you do it for somebody, it's probably not a big deal. If suddenly you're really good at it and you've got 60 lawn mowers in your front yard and people showing up all day and night and you're cranking them up, your neighbor's probably not going to be too happy. So that's a case where you'll probably want some conditions on that. I would say, just as a quick side note, as a tip, if you're working with your conditional use permits and you find that you're using the same conditions over and over and over and over and over again with every single conditional use permit, consider just putting that in the code so you don't need to worry about listing that thing over and over again if it's that consistent. The third category are uses that are just, they're not allowed under that zoning district. So we break the zoning code up into different districts, residential districts or commercial districts or industrial districts. And under each one of those districts, you have uses that just aren't allowed at all. And usually it's the uses that are not listed are the ones that are prohibited, usually. Now you have to be really careful with that because in your zoning code, if you define the uses and you're defining that, but then you don't list that use under that zoning district, that means it's not allowed. So you have to be really careful of what are you defining in terms of uses and what are you listing or not listing? So that's just something to keep in mind. Nigel, did you?
You're saying that the defining uses has to also be defined in the zoning?
You, you really, really need to define every use in that code.
And make it transferable to?
If, if you have a use defined, it should be listed or it should be addressed somewhere in your zoning districts.
Okay.
So let's say you've got a bunch of uses that are defined and like you're defining, you made a use for like a small retail, small commercial retail, under 10, 10,000 square feet. And you make that use in the code, but then you don't actually list it under any one of the zoning districts? That means it's prohibited. You can't do it anywhere. So you need to.
It has to be associated with the zoning.
It needs to be associated with it. The other thing to keep in mind is if you're showing a use in your zoning district and you don't define that use, you are asking for a load of trouble. You really need to define every single use in there. And that's a good process of just combing through there, just making sure there's a use listed, that you got a definition for it.
Okay.
So it kind of goes both ways. And I'm sure, you know, you all work with zoning code all the time, but kind of what I tell folks and if, if folks from the public are coming in, if they're confused of, the zoning district, really all that's doing is it's saying like R1 residential. All that saying is, flip to the R1 part of the code, those are the laws that apply to that piece of property. So people get kind of confused by it and it's a little intimidating. Usually when I go and talk to a group and I ask them, what's the zoning of your property? Usually no one has a clue, they don't know. I did this thing to embarrass a friend of mine where I was just walking down the street and asking random people like, what's the zoning of your property? What's the zoning of your property? What's? Nobody knew. And so it, it's not an intuitive thing. So if people, if you sense that applicants or people from the public are feeling a little confused by it, you just kind of describe it like that. If zoning code has zoned this designation, all that means is go to the code and pull that one part of the code out and those are the laws that apply there. And do you all have, I think you have, you do have a zoning matrix. So that's, that's a great thing to have. So you would list all your uses here on the left side. You'd list all your districts up here and then kind of figure out, do a little battleship exercise here to figure out, you know, where those apply. I mean, I love zoning matrix, I think they're great. In terms of, so we got use. So first thing off, zoning as a regulatory tool to implement land, local land use policy from the comp plan, it's going to regulate use. Number two is intensity. So it's how much of that use. There's a lot of different ways on how to regulate intensity. It's, it could be the amount of square feet in the building. Could be in terms of residential dwelling units per acre. That could be based off of the size of the lot for each one. What's the minimum lot size? Certainly 20 acre minimum lot size is going to be a different intensity than a quarter acre. You could also have floor area ratios, going to, to, to influence the amount of building and thus the amount of use here. So if you have the FAR of one, you could have a one-story building that covers up the entire site. You could also cover up half the site with a two-story building or quarter of the site with a four-story building and so forth and so forth. It, it's, FAR is giving you what's the, what's the size of the building and thus that's going to control the use involved with it. So that's, that's one thing communities use. And then on the bulk side, you know, keep in mind that under every zoning district, you're going to have uses that are listed that are by right, conditional use permit. Maybe you'll have those that are prohibited there. You'll have your intensity, so there's going to be kind of a density section under that, that district. And the last one is going to be the bulk. So that is your front setback, your side setback, your back, your rear setback and then the building height. That's really how we define the bulk of a building with our zoning regulations is those different setbacks and then the height. And that's usually listed under kind of a bulk section under each one of your zoning district. And in case you're wondering, there's a term for that, that area in the middle, it's called the building envelope. So that's the, the volume of buildable space and you factor in all those things there. So it's a powerful tool. So I do have one PowerPoint that's 130 pages long. It goes way down into zoning and all the different approaches you can use. But that's really zoning in a nutshell. Keep in mind, it is a law like any other law. That by right thing is really something to keep an eye on. I think it's great if the planning commission kind of, I love having an annual meeting just to take a look at, have like a annual report. I think is a great thing planning commissions do. And then just log and identify what are some issues that we've seen with the ordinance, with our meetings and so forth. And, you know, on the zoning front, you know, you all are the ones that really apply the zoning the most of any other committee or group, so you're going to have the best insight on that. What other issues are going on with zoning for you all? What other main questions do you have?
I know we addressed a lot last time. I know like the density was a big one that was brought up. There's a couple others that I forget that we mentioned last time, but.
You talked about right. The city struggles with by right. City residents struggle with by right. And understanding that our control is non-existent as long as they're meeting those codes that are already there. And, and city residents, they really, they come here and they, you know, they say, you know, the planning commissioner, city council is not doing the job and allowing these things to happen.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I mean, I think the, the question that that begs is when we get around to rewriting the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances in this, as part of this process, how restrictive? Do we want to try to reflect some of that, the dissatisfaction that has been expressed with, I think it's with both volume and density by right? Right? So do we want to say, do we want to say that you can't put any more than 25 boughs on a single parcel unless we approve it? Right? Do we want to say, we can do it as density, we can do it, there are a lot of tools that we could use to do that. But I think maybe the way, and I came in late, I apologize, maybe the way to contextualize this, that frustration that I think we, maybe not frustration, that experience we've all had with people who are frustrated about by right is, you know, what, what are the, what are the sort of, you know, what are the lines on the edge of the road? How far we can go?
Yeah.
And, and what's, what are, what should we be looking for in terms of that stuff?
Oh, for sure. And kind of mentioned the other PowerPoint we have on zoning too, just emphasized that zoning is such a huge universe. There's, there's so many different tools and approaches that you can use. Virginia's a little tricky because we are a strict Dillon Rule state, so what you're allowed to do is a little restricted. But with that said, it really is, even, even with that, there are so many different approaches you can take and tools. I think what you said earlier, just you referenced the comp plan there too. Always the starting point is that point in the middle is the comp plan to figure out what are your policy objectives? What is it you're trying to do? And then you really build the code around that. And so, I mean, part of the comp plan process should, for each neighborhood or area, really determine, you know, what type of, of massing are you looking for? What type of design are you looking for in the building? Those are all things you can do under zoning. So zoning can regulate the mass of the building, the height, how far back from the property lines. It can regulate in some ways the design of those buildings. It can regulate, you know, so many different things with it. So I mean, it's this really powerful tool and you do have to be a little careful on how you apply it because you need to make sure the exact wording and exactly which tool you use matches up first with what your specific policy is. So if you're having an issue with by right development on massing, I would say in the comp plan, really try to focus in on, in those neighborhoods, those areas, what is appropriate massing there? And what are the existing buildings? What's the character? What, what is it you're trying to preserve in the community? Talk to the residents that live there, figure out, you can do like visual preference surveys, you can do all sorts of engagement with them, kind of what their most desired building is. So then if you do have those folks come in in that meeting and they're upset with zoning, you can always go back to the process and point to that and say, you know, I hear your concern, we had a big process on this one. We worked with the community and the community really set this vision that we've implemented through the local land use. So that's just kind of a, a general approach, I guess I would take. If, if it's really, if that's an issue you guys are seeing a lot.
And in my time on the commission echoing Kenny's sentiment about the public and by right, it is typically come into play on larger tracts of land versus smaller five-acre, 10-acre Duke farm, big rural farm, people, you know, that's where you get a lot of discussion on your by right stuff.
And that's a place where I think the comprehensive plan doesn't, because it's been, doesn't reflect the values of the people that live in that neighborhood.
That's right.
Because of the, because it's by right RS7, RS12, whatever, RS12, right? And obviously that's too dense for the neighbors.
Yeah.
Right? And so that's where we, I think we, when we go through the comprehensive plan process, we've got to look at those specific areas like that one. I mean, I, to some extent, the horse is out of the barn. I don't know, we've got a ton of undeveloped land left in the city, large parcel undeveloped rural land left in the city. I can think of a couple places. But that's, yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what we've got, that we had the biggest public, most well-attended public hearing we've had was on a, I'm going to totally screw the details of this up to the, Google maybe ran.
It was a 400 acre, 400 acre property and by right it was a RS12, so it was all simple housing detached, 12,000 square foot lots. Our board was lots, only more than.
Okay.
And then they wanted to do a P U B. And what we were getting at in our evaluation was if they came in and did what they could do by right and then what they're kind of clustering and doing in open space, we're getting about the same number of units. Granted, you're getting town roof clusters and other clusters, but the unit density is roughly the same. And so when you're having a public hearing, that's also hard to understand in what role was, why, why do they need this? What did they ask for?
I will say anecdotally, one thing we are, I will say with the high degree of confidence that we are going to change about the P U D process when we do the comprehensive plan, if we're going to make them tell us that by right is. Because that, this, all this pie in the sky, how many by right thing, I think that was the point of contention for most of us, was whether or not what they were doing was better than by right. And I think we ultimately all felt like it was, but I think we all felt like. And I think we ultimately all felt like it was, but I think we all felt like implementing that didn't, because we asked them and they danced around, well, it might be this and it might be that. And then we were, we could never really pin them down on, cause it was, I think for a lot of us, we felt like, look, this is kind of easy to defend. It's the same density, but we get a park.
Yeah, sure.
But, but when they're like, well, it might be this and it might be that, it makes, it look like they're hiding something.
Yeah.
It makes it, you know, we got accused, I got accused of hiding something because we, we continued out of mine.
So was this a P U D?
Yes.
Yes.
Ultimately it came to the, came to the, the commission as a P U D for, because the application was for.
Four phases of higher.
Yeah, they weren't, they wouldn't have been able to have any townhouse product in the other. Um, so it was for the product differences, it was clustering differences, it was public benefit and the fact that they were in Drunken Greenway. Reporters of, so there was a lot of kind of issues. The unit amount came up in terms of, that only you can do by right versus the number that we're getting in this.
We kinda calculated out, square footage would have been four hundred sixty units if there were no hangups and they had a clean slate of property, they could have hit four sixty with that square footage. Now, there were some hangups because of some, um, land use issues.
Yeah, so we're.
So we did the math.
We're doing, you know, back in napkin math, trying to figure out if there's a easement, conservation easement that's landlocked the parcel. So I, you know, that's something that I feel like we've gotta figure out how to address moving forward is to make them, make them tell us as part of the application.
But the concessions that they did make were, they're like the houses, the single family detached that they're gonna build that border, I think Duke and elsewhere. By right, everyone could have a driveway that exits with road frontage, right? And that's a whole lot of driveways on that road. So one of the concessions that they, now they made a bunch of concessions to try to fit it in, that made it more manageable. And it also gave them a quicker sell point on the, uh, high volume housing to fund the, the single family detached. But they're doing two or three, um, single family detached with a shared driveway to reduce the impact on the road exits. It's still, when you, you ask the neighbor and homeowners, it's still not what they wanted. But even with the by right, if they'd have hit four hundred, single family detached, they could have had a four hun, I mean, anyone had four hundred because of, of, uh, roadway frontage. But every single piece of property could have exited out onto the road, which would have made it much more difficult. So it was a lot of give and take, but to Will's point, the gray area on us being able to give a hard number, we looked at the map, they could have done four hundred forty eight units around the land easement or, um, the, oh, I forget what it was, but.
Now, I'm not sure, and this could be a question for you, I would feel like we would be illegally shaking ground to say, do the upfront engineering work. To show us how you, it's not, you're not, it's not the application we want, you want a P U D that we allow in our ordinance. But we're gonna make you do engineering upfront work to do a design you don't want. Like that, I, I feel like that's a tricky place to require any work.
It's a tricky place to be for sure. I think it's one of the shortcomings of, um, contractual zoning or P U Ds is, one, it, it kinda, it turns into this negotiation on the development. And for you all as the decision makers, P U D is kind of, actually a little bit of a tricky spot. Because they're saying, this is what we wanna do and you're saying, this is what we want. And then they might come back with, well, the market's not gonna, not gonna support that. And what you see many times, this kind of, uh, approach in a lot of local governments is they'll come in with a P U D and they'll have their vision and they'll say, you know, we're gonna have twenty percent commercial up here and then the rest of it's residential. They get it approved, they come in, they build a residential and then they come back and say, well, the market changed on us. The commercial's not gonna work anymore, so now we wanna update that, we wanna update the master plan and go back through the process. And it really puts you in a tricky spot because, because now you're kind of faced with a, do you just accept that there's a development with just empty land up here? Or, so you, you kinda get a little put in a corner with that. So I think P U Ds can be great, I think there's a lot of challenges that come with them. The other challenge is from a staff perspective, when you approve a P U D, you basically have a new ordinance that you have to enforce. So you have your standard ordinance, then you have all these other little ordinances that are, little master plans are adopted. And, ah, gosh, this makes it tricky.
Thank you, in that, in their case, they did reference our ordinance in those ways. Um, it didn't have a mix, I mean, it had a mix of residential types, but it did not have a commercial to come in.
Yeah.
Which is more traditional and up P U D.
Yeah.
So I have a question to Will. If you have, not for you, but to your point, if you have, um, these undeveloped properties that are privately owned and currently would fall into that by right, is the answer to that, to what Will said, is to change the existing code so it puts certain restrictions so that even though it's by right, the code says you can only have this. And if, if we do that, I'm not saying it's, it's, it's not a good thing, but if you do that, do we run the risk of losing that potential revenue because now we've become so restrictive that now a, a.
Developer goes elsewhere.
They'll go elsewhere.
Yeah.
Let, let me see if I pass the test.
Okay, yeah, sure, sure.
So I think we can just, we can just decide that the, right, that the, what was by right is not by right anymore. We can just decide that the density has to be lower or higher without any, right?
Yeah, the, the P U D ordinance will lay out kind of, uh, an allowable, uh, range of densities. And they'll come in and they'll set a, a density that they're gonna propose. But most P U D ordinances will say appropriate density is between this and this. And they'll come in and they'll put it somewhere in there. But whatever you approve that's adopted as part of the master plan, that's the new ordinance for that parcel. And those are the laws that apply according to that, it's essentially proffered. Like you proffered the plan, that's part of the code now essentially.
And I think you're, you're getting to a point of when you're talking about what's by right.
Right.
You can amend your zoning ordinance to change what by right means.
Yes, yeah.
So it certainly is a political decision in the fact that someone who thinks they might have a certain ability to develop their property. If you have some more restrictive zoning ordinance, that's perfectly within council's ability to do so. It's just recognizing that, okay, someone that maybe had this desire for their property or thought they were gonna build it a certain way. That may be a change with a new ordinance, but that happens all the time and that is the ability the council can make that change. So you would be setting the new by right zoning district if you made amendments to your work.
So years ago, um, Rappahannock County decided that the minimum lot size is gonna be ten acres, period, flat, minimum lot size for a single family home. We could just decide that as part of the comprehensive plan review process, not that, something like that, right? Minimum lot size is an acre in the city. And we could just decide that as part of the comprehensive plan process, put that forth in the review of the comprehensive plan. That's the new highest density, single family home that we think is right. And then it would be, if the council adopted it, that would be our zoning ordinance. And that would be the only thing, everything else would come.
If the aiming is more dense, we'd have to come on the initial use permit, right?
I, well, I would say just how we refer to by right with P U Ds is a little bit different. Because what's by right is what's adopted as with P U D. So they're gonna come in with a proposal, this is what we wanna do, here's our master plan and here are the densities, these are the uses and here's the layout and here are, are bulk requirements that we're gonna propose within this P U D framework. Whatever you all adopt, that's what's by right for that. If they wanna do something different, they gotta go right back through the rezoning process to amend that master plan.
And you all, I think right now, when you're talking about by right, you, you guys have shifted away from the P U D.
Yeah, they're talking about the original by right.
Okay, the original, the original baseline, yeah.
You guys peeked me on a new question when you laid out how some of these people, um, developers can approach a P U D, right? Which is they can do one end of their development first, come back revisit, market changed, now don't wanna do it. Now, is that the same, uh, framework with the conditional use permit as opposed to P U D? For example, we have a piece of property that we just approved, I don't know if city council approved it at the latest meeting or not. But to build, you know, seventy nine units, four units, we're gonna be a Virginia land grant. But they're also gonna do five thousand square foot, uh, retail or business, uh, building. Could they build their seventy nine units and then come and say the market changed and we wanna put five more houses on the property? Or is the conditional use permit the way that it's laid out?
Yeah.
They can always request to amend their C U P, but it would always be deniable by council, so they could say, no, we, we wanna hold that spot out for business. We don't agree with an amendment.
So then if we were gonna revisit approving a C U D or a conditional C U P, um, in that, in that same framework to safeguard against that type of situation, could it be a requirement of C U P to have them build the office space first?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I'm not saying that's gonna be the case, I really doubt that's gonna be the case, cause I could see the benefit of that office space across, in that area, but.
With the P U D, you, you wouldn't normally see that where you'd say, you know, the building.
The B U D or the C U P?
A P U D, you don't really say, conditional use permit, that's a condition you could put in.
Okay.
Suppose you could do it with the P U D too, but, yeah, I mean, you can set all sorts of conditions with a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And also keep in mind that the C U P carries with the property too. So the C U P is put in place on a piece of property, this person sells it to this person, to this person, to this person. That C U P is still with the land.
Okay.
Um, whoever they sell to, those conditional use permits still apply.
That works. I like that it's all learning processes, slight, slight differences between the P U D and the C U P.
Yeah.
And it's not that far fetched, um, where my parents live in Culpeper County, they just developed a eight or nine hundred unit town, single family home. And the sales pitch was this, this is a food desert and there's no grocery store for twenty minutes. That was part of the reason that the conditional use permits were approved for that development. All of the residential's done, developer says, oh, the commercial real estate market is terrible, we wanna put houses in. And we don't have to, they don't have to, because of the way the C U P was issued, it's just a zone commercial, they don't have to build it, put tenants in it. So they just said, okay, we're not doing anything here, it's gonna sit vacant.
I would put, kind of, just, uh, a word of warning with either one of them, whether you're doing a rezoning case or a conditional use permit. Just being aware. I've seen this a lot where an applicant will come in and they wanna rezone their property. Let's say they wanna rezone it to commercial, to put a bar there, uh, like a bar restaurant, you know, as an example. And they'll come in and with the rezoning, they'll show some really pretty pictures. They love to show pretty pictures. It's hand drawn, there's probably gonna be a balloon somewhere in the picture and a mother holding, holding some kid's hand and, you know, say, this is what I wanna do and like, ah, that looks great, it's awesome. And then what will happen is then the local planning commission will recommend approval, because they've seen all these pretty pictures. Keep in mind that when you approve that, that new zoning district, when the city council approves it, that new zoning district is gonna be on that land. And they're gonna be, their by right uses are gonna be whatever's listed in the code. And they have a pretty picture, but unless that's proffered somehow, that doesn't mean anything. They're allowed to do what's under the code. And they can make, they can say all sorts of statements, like, oh, this is gonna be, you know, we're seeing your community, oh, it's gonna look pretty, oh, we're gonna use, like, it's gonna be brick and this and this and this. But unless they actually put signature on a contract and that's what a proffer is, a contract, that's kind of what a P U D is. It's the contract between, it's contractual zoning between the applicant and the locality. And then the contractual zoning, you've signed a legal agreement that says, this is what we're gonna do and that's how the zoning is applied there. So just be careful with P U Ds too, that happens all the time. I was also in a community not far from here, I won't say which one it was, but I was sitting in a, a council meeting and, um, they were putting in a new, um, restaurant. And everyone in the room during the rezoning case came up and said, this applicant is, is great. He's awesome, he loves the community, he's been here for thirty years, he does a great job with everything he does. And then every, thirty people came up and said that. Then the applicant came up and they were starting to ask questions and people started getting a little grumbly, like, why are you beating up on this guy? This guy loves the community, no, 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 no. I think they ended up approving it. But the one thing I wanted to kinda make, I wanted to say something, I couldn't, cause I was there for a different item, was it doesn't matter if he's a good guy. It makes no difference at all, I don't care who the guy is. Cause if you approve it, that guy could drop dead right that second with a heart attack, I don't know. So, or you could just sell it, it's not about who, it's about what. So, so when they get that rezoning, the zoning doesn't convert back, like, once the person sells a property or something happens to them. Like, like, they have that zoning in place, you just have to be very careful with rezoning case. It includes P U Ds or any other by right, uh, any other Z M As, zoning map amendment, is when that is approved, anything they say is not tied to the zoning, it's just stuff that's said. And it doesn't matter who it is, whether it's the greatest person in the world or a complete idiot, um, whatever, it, whatever is put on there, whatever zoning designation's given, that is the law for that piece of land.
So would you encourage us to think, and I don't wanna be overly dramatic, but when we look at conditional use permits, we should probably have in the back of, or C P's or P U D's in the back of our mind, like, kind of potentially what the worst case scenario might be, then that's what we'll be guarding against.
You can, yeah, I mean, uh, and that's really part of your job is to help that out of, um, if you have a good, if you have a well-written zoning ordinance, the worst case scenario should be pretty well.
Well, yeah, okay, not the worst, the worst, the worst case as, right, under the.
Yeah, 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 sure.
It might look like, you know, it might look like, um, Kathy's in Stanton, but it turns out it's the, you know, something else terrible that we don't want our kids to go into.
Yeah.
Porn child or something, right?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I mean, once they have that zoning, they might come in and say, that's also where like the engineering gets a little tricky with the P U D you're mentioning is, they might even come in with a site plan and say, we wanna do rezoning, here's a site plan of what we wanna do. Unless they wanna proffer that site plan, that site plan doesn't mean anything, it's just a piece of paper with some lines on it, that doesn't mean anything. So they might come with a site plan of what they wanna do, it gets approved, they can throw that away and then bring out whatever it is they wanna actually do. So yes, you should, you should think through, what does the zoning actually allow for, unless they wanna proffer something to it.
So how would we go about proffering fixed things that we want?
Yeah, so, let me just kinda add that real quick, and how do we, like, how do we? I feel like there's a little bit of push back and forth, like, hey, we kinda think this might be what we wanna see. And then they come back and it's like, oh, well, we couldn't really do that, and I think we feel like, I think we feel like we don't really have any ability to like.
Say yes or no, go back and finish.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, unless you do that, you're not getting what you want.
With, yeah, with proffers, I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, you all recommend, um, you don't have the legislative authority to approve a Z M A. But, um, but regardless, whether you're approving it or giving a recommendation, I mean, if, if you're not comfortable with the proffers, you, I mean, you're well within your realm to say, I would recommend denial, because we don't feel like, we feel like there's impacts here that aren't being addressed with the design.
But, but the, the proffers are only applicable.
Again, that's not, but I mean, yeah, by right, be separate.
Yeah.
If they are trying to amend his zoning district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And add something new to the property.
Then we can.
Then you can, yeah.
And that might be a reason to be a little over aggressive with density, for example. And say, we're gonna really rein in density so that if you want that higher density, you have to go through the C U P process. So we can tell you, we want you to build that bike lane or that, um, side, extra piece of sidewalk or whatever the case might be, because you're talking about three hundred acres here and we wanna have more control.
Yeah.
As opposed to five acres or ten acres where it's not gonna have the same level of impact. And so that way, we would not necessarily, like, cause if it just comes in as by right, we're not gonna be, have any ability to do any proffers. Right, like, and the one that strikes me, uh, I think it struck me a couple times, cause I drive by it every day and they're tearing all the friggin trees down now, is the one on Rossar, right? I don't know, I wish we had had the ability to make them build sidewalk to link the Rossar for that one. Right?
They're gonna build sidewalk.
In front of their development, but are they building all the way up to those directions?
Off site, I mean, not off site, yeah, that would be an off site.
Just on their front.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, but I wish we could have made them connect it up to, cause we have, I drive by people on that, that were walking and gravel on the end of the road. And I would love if we had been able to, cause that development is gonna create so much pedestrian traffic in that corridor. And I would love if we had been able to, cuz that development is gonna create so much pedestrian traffic in that corridor.
Running the same thing on Hopman, where they're stretching front, a bridge, the new development is already built sidewalk, you're not gonna have sidewalk carry up in front of, of the retirement.
That would be an off-site improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually, so, there, there's a lot of limitations on what you can do with proffers. Now, I'll say this too, um, so there's proffers and there's conditional use permits, let's not get them confused.
Right.
Conditional use permit is listed under the zoning district, it's a use that might be appropriate, but with conditions applied to it. And that goes through the process, you list what those conditions are, you can ask for conditions, you can say, we wanna condition this, we, we wanna condition that, we're gonna make you condition these things. But the proffer, it's a little different, not every state does proffers, I think nineteen states in, in the country do proffers. Uh, only one of them does cash proffers, Yo, Virginia, um, and so, um, so with, with those proffers, it's, it's a different dialogue completely, and it's very, be very careful about what that dialogue is. Cuz with conditional use permits, you can say, we wanna set these conditions, we, you know, we're gonna make you do this. With proffers, you gotta be really careful, they have to be voluntary, one. So you can't say, I'm not gonna approve this ZMA unless I get a proffer from you.
So are proffers always associated with a rezoning?
Yes, always a rezoning.
Okay.
It's, it's, it never comes into play with a conditional use permit, doesn't come into play with a byright use, it's only a ZMA, it's only a zoning map amendment.
Right, and that, that would be the, again, that would be the reason, to, you wanna drive those proffers to really.
Some localities do that, so some localities will actually push the zoning down, will downzone a bunch of properties. Push it down and, and know that the market wants higher, so they'll push it all way down, knowing that if you wanna build anything, you're gonna have to rezone it. And then that means you have to come back to the locality, and that now we have the authority with proffers to do this. I got, I got two concerns about that, one, is if you impose a lower density, be prepared that someone might actually build at that lower density. And they might build a lower density that doesn't jive with the character of that neighborhood, and just be aware of that.
Yeah, your byright, they're gonna, they build some monstrosities byright, and then you're stuck.
They, they might build at that level, and there's some unintended things I've seen there before. The other one is, if you do try to get those proffers out, you can't require the proffers, when you're in that meeting, you really can't say, we, we want you to proffer this.
Sure.
Cuz they're gonna say, well, my lawyer's over here, and we're gonna have a conversation after this, and then it's a whole other thing. So, uh, you can't require it, it has to be tied, the proffer has to be tied to the impacts of the development. So it, it has to be, like, we're gonna build a big new residential development, the proffer has to have a rational nexus with, with that, and it has to be proportional to the impact. So, um, with that, on a proffer, y- you could request things like improvements to the ingress egress, but you can't, you can't even accept a proffer that's applied somewhere else, or like down the street. And even if they provide the proffer and you approve it, they could come back later and say, we're gonna challenge you now, because that proffer was illegal. And they could win, even if they proffered it. Um, so that's just, that's one thing with kind of the newer zoning legislation and the state code fifteen point two, is you, you gotta be really careful with that front. Um, some communities see the proffer as like a, a fix-all, but, um, it's, it's, my personal opinion is, it's better to have a well-designed zoning ordinance, um, that does exactly what it is you want to do, as opposed to having a reactionary zoning ordinance, which is kind of begging the applicant to kinda do the thing you want them to do.
But, okay, so then how do we address, I mean, so, I think, in my opinion, the perfect example of this, and I think we just got lucky, right? Over on Hopman, we had, they were building a new residential development, and the first plaque they brought us, the entrance was offset with the cross, was a, it was basically an entrance across us from an existing grocery store, and the entrance was offset. And we made, we all looked at it, basically said, well, that makes no sense, why would you just line it up? Fortunately, it was a byright application, I think, right? And fortunately, the applicant just said, yeah, we're willing to lose a couple units to make you all happy, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, those are things we would have required in the, more specifically, in the public improvement plan stage.
Yeah.
Based on some engineering standards, but yes, it was a comment by the planning commission that they were able to rework. But I think in the public improvement plan stage, which is that next step, after the preliminary plow, when public works engineers are looking at it, city engineers are looking at it, planning zoning, um, we could've cited VDOTs and VDOT standards and forced them to line up.
Sure, but I think, just to use it as an example, right? It strikes me that, like, we find ourselves in these situations where we look at something and we all sit here and think, okay, fine, it's their land, they can do what they want, but there's this obvious thing, it would be better for the city if they did, did it there. And, you know, in that one, I think we all looked at that and said, you know, in ten years, we're all gonna pay to put a light there, and somebody's probably gonna get killed there in the meantime, right? And so how do we, like, that's, I think, where we, as a commission, have a lot of frustration with some of the z, the, the density, and why I think we felt some type of way about proffers, and I know, like, setting aside the complexity of, like, traffic.
Yeah.
VDOT, blah, 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 but how do we, how do we get ahead of those situations? To where it's not like, I think, at least in my experience, I feel like, you know, these developers are coming in, they're, they're getting their money, they're kinda sticking us with whatever they feel like they can make the most money with. They're taking advantage of the services, they're getting out of town, and we're gonna have to come back and do the improvements in five or ten years.
Yeah, so we, keep in mind too, that the zoning ordinance is more than just the zoning districts, there's a lot of other sections to it. Including the definition section, which, but earlier, the importance of that, but, uh, included in there too are like your development standards. So there's some development standards you can have in there in terms of ingress egress and site design, that you can put in place. You could have your subdivision ordinance, which we'll talk about in a minute too, of, that has standards with transportation, uh, construction standards, and ingress egress, and all those in there too. So part of that is also part of your code, and you can build that into your code where you, you can require that. Um, you talked earlier too, kinda jumping on a previous comment you all made, is kind of, um, byright densities, if someone's coming in. And you might have, uh, there was some discussion of maybe setting a different, uh, lot size. Is that, that would be a zoning text amendment, where you change the language of the code, and that's gonna affect every property zoned that, that district. Uh, so you might be in an area where you wanna kinda like fiddle around with some densities, or maybe some of those standards you're talking about. But then you might kinda scratch your head and say, well, we're gonna make these changes to this zoning district, but that's gonna change the standards for all, every property zoned with this, but we only want that to apply here. We don't want it to be like spot zoning, and apply just this one. Now, one thing you can do is just put an overlay district on it, and that's a great way to, it's just another layer on top of your base layer. So they have to follow these codes, but then they also have to follow these codes on top of it. So, y- you can actually layer requirements, if there's a certain part of the city, you want to, you wanna have that base layer in place, but you wanna put a secondary layer like those development standards, you can use things like those.
So does that affect other areas of the plans, such as growth and things of that nature? And you put these layers of restrictions, do you run that risk?
I'll show it on this map, actually, so the zoning map is up next, but you, you can draw the overlay zone however you like. It's really, you can make it apply where you want it to, but it'll be on that zoning map, so, um, the boundaries of what that overlay affects is really based off of what you want. Um, so just keep in mind that we have the zoning text, the actual written piece of it. But if you had the zoning text, but you didn't actually know where those regulations applied, it wouldn't do you a whole lot of good, so, which, that's why we have our zoning map. The zoning map shows obviously what zoning districts apply to every property. So here in Charlottesville, you can see they've got an overlay right here, this is the entrance corridor. So they have it laid right on there, and it's parcel-specific, so you have it, uh, laid right, so you know exactly where the overlay is as it goes down this corridor and down this corridor here. So, um, this would be example of, they've got a lot of different overlays, they have historic district overlays, they have entrance corridor overlays, they've got, um, kind of some additional residential overlay districts, they have like a downtown overlay district. So you can have the baseline zoning stay in place, so you don't have to create a bunch of new zoning districts, and you can just put a new overlay on top of it. And you can set those boundaries yourself.
Is overlay like a per-use type of situation, or does it have to be something that currently exists and it's like plug-and-play?
Um, you would have to create the overlay district in your zoning code and list it with your other zoning districts. And then just, you know, label it, to make it clear that it's overlay, and describe that in the purpose, and then you'd have to show it on the map and draw those exact boundaries. But in terms of what it does, there's a lot of flexibility there, even under Virginia, Virginia state code, of what that overlay does. And if it's something like an entrance overlay, going back to what Will was saying too, you can create something like an entrance overlay and have, um, an architectural review board, review anything that happens in that overlay. So Alvin Rock County is an example, does that, they have entrance corridors, there's an overlay district along those major highways. And if you wanna build something on one of those properties, it has to go through an ARB, they have to review it, and they have say on that. So, um, that's where, it's not necessarily by, by right, but the ARB will review it according to a list of design standards. And they'll make sure, they'll kind of evaluate it, and that's another tool, or another way of kind of having a little bit more control over the design.
Fine, fine-tuning right in a specific area, you could have a historic district where you say, you know, any remodel has to be period, but on historic Main Street, it's gotta go through a review board to make sure that it's not just similar, that it meets architectural standards to still qualify, you know, for the national historic, you know, registry or something, you know what I mean? So it's, it's just like putting a filter on it to give you the extra layer, fine-tune exactly, so you maintain more flexibility outside of the area, and you're not so restrictive for majority of your residents. But for the ones that are specifically intricate to, um, what you're looking for in your city, you kinda hold that to a higher standard.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Those overlays are the reason Charlottesville has the only brick Walmart in the United States.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of brick in Charlottesville, and I think that is one of their standards that they use when they evaluate.
Cuz it almost, Walmart almost didn't come here.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Now, so, to use the example of bricks though, um, there's a hotel built, I think, right around here.
Which street did you own?
This is on Monticello Avenue.
Yep.
And there was, there's a hotel built there, hotel, it's like, kinda gray, it's just a big gray rectangle. And I remember, uh, a local official asking staff, why did you approve that? That, that local official didn't think it was a very attractive building, and they said, how could you let this happen? Staff said, it's byright. And she said, yeah, but everywhere else along this corridor, we, we, we had a review process on design, and we made, we had all this control over it, but this one, you just, you just approved it. He said, because that overlay district is along the edge of the property line, and that hotel is outside of that overlay district. So if they built it five hundred feet this way, yeah, you could've had that, but they didn't, they built it here. So, um, yeah, it, it, it's one of those, one of those many tools you can use. So if you wanna have some of that control, a byright's an issue, um, you, you can implement strategies like that.
So if the city had an area that we wanted to maintain, um, some of the physical, um, attractiveness, but it's zoned in an area that has, you know, high-density residential, we could put a filter over top of it, you know, requesting, you know, secondary approval, so we maintain, um, the attractiveness of the property and still can meet, um, their goal for more residential, but that would give us the ability to kinda filter and have some oversight. So they, byright, be able to build, you know, fifteen houses, but we gotta make sure that it, it doesn't lose the charm of the neighborhood in this, on this specific stretch that we wanna maintain.
Here's a question, this was, I had, was asked this question recently, and I didn't know the answer. Um, somebody asked me about the, there's, you know, where Wendy's and the Days Inn and everything are, there's a, I had never noticed it until somebody pointed out to me, there's a really ugly fence right along there.
Yep.
So you could do, we could do an overlay district with architectural review of, you know, fencing and landscaping, and as part of, now, it wouldn't, nothing would change until somebody had to, wanted to build something new there, right?
Yeah.
But, call it the welcome corridor, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a limit of zoning too, is, you know, implies more to new stuff.
New.
Um, but yeah, I mean, it's, uh, you can also have fencing ordinance in there that regulates heights of fence and materials, I mean, those are all things you can have in there as well.
Would that not be in our existing buffer requirements?
One of our buffers are the, the buffer does require a fence, it's a little bit of a big scripturials, other than that it's a make price. Like, you can allow us to chain link the side.
That one's, the, I, I guess that I had never noticed it, so, till somebody asked me, pointed out how ugly it was to me.
Their faces are three-four.
Well, the reason you see it more, they cut some trees down.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's obviously been there forever.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just woven wire, single-fish fence, it was probably there before the buildings were there.
Yeah.
When they built the road, they probably built, there were probably cows there. Um, but I had never noticed it before, and somebody was like, yeah, you pull into Waynesboro and the first thing you see is this dilapidated old fence, great. And that I now notice every time I try to fly.
Um, so anyway, I, as we're talking about ZMA's too, so if someone comes in with a rezoning case, ZMA, you're gonna increase the intensity, that's a upzone, if you decrease the intensity, that's a downzone. Usually when an applicant comes in, they're tr, coming in with the upzone. You can, as a local government, you can preemptively downzone their property. No one, when they buy a piece of property, they are, they are not, they do not have vested rights in the zoning that goes on that property, it could be changed at any point in time. So, um, now, it doesn't happen super often, cuz it takes a little political capital to change someone's zoning, people tend to get a little unhappy with that sometimes, but it is something you can do, and, um, it's something that you have a lot more of, like, solid footing, if it's part of, you've done your comp plan update, and then you have that to defend your actions here. Um, otherwise, if you come in kinda ad hoc and start changing people's zoning, you start getting into, kind of, um, you, you're probably okay, but people might start challenging you on that one.
Yeah, you get some up, upset people.
You get some upset people, that's for sure.
So, I have two questions that I'm sort of intended to ask in this context, and it seemed like maybe a good time to ask. Um, the spec, two specific questions I have are about changing the zoning requirements. Can we, we've had this discussion before, can we, as a part of the requirements for density and/or architectural requirements, can we require on the undergrounding of overhead lines?
I haven't really seen that as a requirement. Virginia, I guess, might be a little more tricky than maybe some other places, but I've never, I've never seen that. I would throw in there as kind of some icing on my ambiguous response, is keep in mind too, that underlying, putting utilities underground can be pretty expensive.
Yeah.
Especially.
Well, I wanna make the developers sure.
Yeah, and, you know, it's just one of those things, if any additional cost you throw on the developer, they're gonna pass that down the line, especially if it's housing, so, um, uh, that's, that's something you probably could require, especially if you have like an overlay, and, um, I just, I haven't really seen that.
So, so, you know, for example, um, you know, Stanton just did it in there downtown because of the historic district and the view of the buildings and all this stuff. And I, I mean, that, that strikes me as something, like, it's, like, one of the other things you don't notice, that you notice if you have a lot of overhead lines downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, in, in that scenario, I think it would be more rational, so if you have the pre-existing condition of underground lines in a district, and then you would tie your zoning, rather than just creating a new, okay, any new development's gotta bury their lines, but the development beside them isn't. You know, if we, if we were to go that route and say, create an area in the city that we wanna, you know, designate as our historic district or whatever, and we go through the process of undergrounding existing lines, and saying, we're, you know, to maintain historical integrity, we're gonna go this route, then, then it would make more rational.
In, in, in most developments, u- utilities are underground, it's the entrance corridors that still maintain the poles.
Exactly.
Because that's where the power comes in from the substations.
Yeah.
You'd have to go all the way back to. You'd have to go all the way back to the substation to totally bury utility.
Sure, but if I, but if we make them do it.
But downtown, you could, it's classified as a historical district. You could stand a better chance of.
But if we make them do it, you know, again, just by, for example, if we make them do it on a third of Hopeman. They're not going to go to the edge of the parcel and go underground and go back out. They're going to underground it to the length of Hopeman, and then we get what we want, which is more consistent power, if that's what we want. Yeah, but I'm just asking in that context, if that's something that we could.
Uh, it's, you know, it's, it's something to get, keep in mind that existing streets, so zoning is going to apply to, to new development.
Right.
And you can't make them underground something that, you know, isn't on their property. And if they're subdividing, building a new, like residential subdivision, usually that's going to be underground anyway, um, they put in. But I, it's not something I've seen, but it would be something you could put in a capital program. Another thing that communities have done is, undergrounding is pretty expensive, but some have, um, like downtown in particular, moving them behind the buildings. So you're not having to dig trenches.
I think most of them are behind the buildings.
It's a little, it's a little bit sheer.
I, I know one thing, and maybe Leslie can answer this, but I know we approved it, east corridor entrance improvement. That was a smart scale project.
But that also won't underground.
Yeah, that, but as part of that, if I remember the thing right. They are creating an eight-foot wide walkway or sidewalk alongside, uh, M- Main. Which already requires excavation to put that in there. To bury them, you only got to go just a few more feet deeper. But I don't know what, uh, the finished plan looked like. I know there was a lot of discussion when that came up with the previous commission. That why don't we take this opportunity to bury those lines coming into Waynesboro? Cause you want to create a nice, pretty, uh, scenic entry from the parkway into Waynesboro. Because I've seen old pictures, and I'm not sure how old they are. But at one time, there was a big old sign across there that said, welcome to Waynesboro, Virginia.
A big arch.
Yeah.
Yeah, but granted, I mean, the funds that that project has on it do not include burying lines. And I've, we had some discussions with Dominion and based on kind of a franchise agreement, they'll move them usually at their cost, but not burying.
Yeah.
But that would be, would that be something that would be, like, let's say we added entrance overlay, for example. Is that something that might be effective to say, hey, we're going to do an entrance overlay from the edge of the city on Main. All the way to the bridge that says, no existing above gr- I mean, no existing above-ground hookups to new development? And then we just help wait thirty years and hope that it eventually all moves underground?
I feel like we can't stop them from connecting to the power.
Yeah, that's, that's more of a, that's a more of a between the property owner.
We could just require them to be, you know, Amish settlements and everyone has work. Just no, no electric whatsoever. It's, it's good.
Yeah, it's not something I've really seen. I mean, and the, the, the answer to legal questions is always refer to the city attorney on those things. But I, I would say that there's probably some, I would have a little trepidation about that. Uh, but when you are reviewing a rezoning case, ZMA, um, state code does lay out what you can and cannot refer to. So when you're given your justification for approval or more importantly denial. You have to refer to certain, certain reasons. So you have to say either, I'm going to recommend denial because it's not consistent with the comp plan, or because of the existing character. Or because, um, kind of growth trends in the area, or transportation concerns. Of, of one of those, you, uh, kind of reasons in the, um, in the state code. You can't say, I don't like the applicant, so I'm going to recommend denial. That's a, goes right under the, you're going to get challenged right away on that, uh, equal protection. And that's going to cause issues. So, um, you have to make sure that what you say is going to be under one of these points. Now, the other thing is not only what you say, but what you write. So in terms of FOIA, keep in mind, anything you put in an email. I was working with the planning commission, an applicant came in. And I, I somehow got on their email chain and they were saying, yeah, this applicant is a bad guy, we need to deny this. Email. And suddenly here's a written record, so no matter what they say in that meeting, there's a written record of why they denied it. So all they need to do is take a FOIA, they get that material, and the applicant has a lawsuit, uh, ready to go. So, um, so you have to really be careful with that. Keep in mind too, if you have an agenda up here in the dais and you're writing things down, that's part of the public record. So that can be FOIA'd as well. So if you're writing like, like this guy's a jerk on your agenda, be aware. As someone who likes to doodle, I learned that lesson. I was, uh, in a meeting and I was making little caricatures of the board members. Some of them didn't.
I'm a doodler. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just a doodler. Like, no offense to them, just like, I was just, I was just doodling. Um, and I was making little notes on there and I was writing notes to the person next to me to ask them questions. And then someone said, um, it was FOIA'd, and then they came in and said, we need all the materials you had with you. And they took the agenda with all the caricatures drawn on them. Oh, that was a good thing that got me into much trouble, but I was a little embarrassed of like, I don't know, like, this is not good. So keep, like, all that, if you're all up here at the dais and you're texting with each other, and you're writing back to each other stuff. Like, be aware of that can also be.
Your personal communication, as somebody who is, as a lawyer who has been the FOIA agent for a government entity before.
Yeah.
Your best friend, Ree FOIA, and text messages is the following, hey, can I call you real quick?
Yeah.
Um, I would discour- I discourage you from texting about substantive ma- texting other members of the commission about substantive matters.
Definitely, 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 definitely. Also, just be careful, if you're having a meeting and someone says, hey, let's take a break. And everyone gets up and y'all go to the bathroom, and I have had to do this before.
One, three of them go with some meeting.
It is, it is a meeting. You're having a meeting within a meeting. That's a procedural due process. Are we, it was, you know, getting a little hot and folks just went outside to smoke break and just talk for a little bit. And there's four or five of them and they're talking about the case. That's a meeting, that's a procedural due process issue. So, um, just all those little things you got to be aware of. There's a lot of tripping points here. If you say proffer's wrong, if you write a little message to somebody, if you take a break and you're talking to each other out there. Just be aware, like, all those are, all those are tripping points.
Lawyers remember that.
And we, as you have, you know, just encourage you, like, early and often, if you have a question or comment or something you want to see out of an application. Um, you know, not that we always know how to do it the best way, but can bring concerns to the applicant. And sometimes that's the way, there are certain items that they then voluntarily choose to proffer. It's because you said, I've heard from some of my planning commissioners, they have concerns about pedestrian connectivity in the area. They have concerns about, and so then they're often looking at, okay, well, how can I fix those concerns? Well, I don't know, you know, some, here's some ideas I have, you know, and then maybe to them, it's like, oh, well, of course, we want to, to proper that. To make sure that concern isn't a, so just encourage you to, to reach out to us with any of these questions, because we can help you out.
So next up, we have our subdivision ordinance, which is often forgotten, poor subdivision ordinance. If we were in North Carolina right now, um, these would be combined. So unified development codes, which they combine subdivision and zoning together. Virginia, we typically keep them apart. Uh, where zoning regulates use intensity in bulk, subdivision ordinance regulates the division of land. So how they're divided, kind of their real intent early on is to make sure that land is divided, recorded, and then transferred with ownership. It's really the heart of property ownership, is you need to know what you actually own, and that it's actually recorded and part of, part of the, the record. Uh, so this is, you know, important for all of this, but you know, for, for staff in particular, that, that they look at, might look at deeds. Uh, subdivision ordinance makes sure that when an applicant comes in, that this process runs correctly. And, um, the records are stored, are recorded in the courthouse. And it's all part of the public record. Now subdivision ordinances, it's a really procedural document of how land is recorded and transferred. But it's also a design document and regulates, uh, standards for roads, for lots, for construction standards like sidewalks. Uh, it can include things like landscaping, if you have alleyways, that can also be in your subdivision ordinance. But it's, that's where all those regulations live, is in there. Uh, road frontage, so forth. So if this is a fake parcel, a big parcel here, let's say this is the front up here. Um, the subdivision ordinance or over here, subdivision ordinance is going to regulate the width of the roadway. The radius of the cul-de-sac, the width of these, uh, lots, the width to depth ratio for these, uh, pie pieces. The standards for those. All that, all that design is all under the subdivision ordinance. It's really that graphic, but, uh, let's say there's an alleyway here, the subdivision ordinance is going to regulate the width of the alley, whether the alleyway is there or not. Uh, whether these are front or rear-loaded lots. You see a lot of houses that are front-loaded, and you have a giant, uh, garage up here at the front. And then the front door is kind of hidden back here somewhere, so it just looks like cars live there in all those houses. So that's a subdivision issue. It's going to regulate things like easements that come across a property, so it could be utility easements, access easements. The processes that go with that. Uh, it's usually prohibits things like flag lots, like pipe stems. Generally things we try to stay away from, so different types of shapes of lots that are subdivided. My favorite is the spite strip. So if someone will say road frontage, they'll subdivide it out, so this property doesn't have road frontage. So you've sold this property, but they actually don't have any access to road frontage, they can't do anything with it. Hence why it's called spite strip. Uh, that's obviously usually prohibited in your subdivision ordinance too. So, uh, with kind of our regulatory package here, we got zoning, which regulates use intensity in bulk. The rezoning map that shows where those apply, and we have our subdivision ordinance, which is how you divide land. Kind of, uh, standards for utilities, uh, construction, roads, sidewalks, maybe landscaping, sometimes it's all laid out in there under that. Next up, we've got our, um, capital improvements programs, or CIP. Do you all review your CIP? Planning commission?
I was about to say, I haven't heard anything about it yet, but I'm not a year in yet.
Normally something the planning commission does. Um, so, uh, I think if you, I don't know, do you accept cash proffers? Okay. If you did accept cash proffers, you were required to review the CIP. Most planning commissions, um, should review the, the CIP, uh, included in there. CIP is, that's a capital budget, that's the physical stuff you build in your community. So sidewalks, roads, schools, libraries, buildings like that, uh, public buildings. Uh, it could be rolling stock, like a police car, bus, if it's a first-time purchase, if it's a replacement, that's operation. Um, but really with the CIP, that is, uh, as a planning commission, knowing that these are the investments that you make in your community. So as a planning commission, it's helpful for you to actually review that, because that's the physical investment piece that goes along with your regulations. That goes along with your, your policies and everything else. So just making sure that, that those all align here. Keep in mind too, that your budget, your CIP in particular, but your budget in general, um, that that too is a plan. A lot of times a community will say, our priority is affordable housing, or our, our priority is mitigating flooding, or our, our priority are schools. And those are nice words, but you don't really know until you open up the budget and see where are they actually putting their money. That's when you really figure out where a community is, what they value and where they're putting their, putting their resources. So that's, that's a place I usually, I like to look, um, with that. For to think about the CIP to visualize it, here's a picture of a city, I don't know which city this is, but Microsoft gave me the image, so it works. Um, so you could say, uh, depends on where you are, but the road and sidewalks would be part of the capital improvements program. Things like the fire hydrants, the street lights, street signs can be, street markings can be. Um, there's a school right there, so schools, that's part of the CIP, that, the building, the infrastructure. If you have buses, if it's one-time purchase, um, the transit stops themselves, street trees could be a CIP, street furniture. Uh, sewer system that's in there, uh, water and sewer in here. Uh, stormwater can be part of it, it's public, uh, can be in there, water system. Uh, there's, that looks like a library, sure, that CIP, uh, there. If you have emergency vehicles for the first purchase of the vehicle, that's CIP. If you have broadband in here, that can be part of the CIP too. I'm assuming there's a city hall somewhere, that's CIP, it's building, that was a capital investment at some point that had to go through the CIP. So if you look at a community, there's a lot here, that's a lot that goes with the CIP. So we're talking about, if you look at this image here, it's going to be, zoning is going to regulate the height of this, the bulk of this. The uses and the intensity in here. The subdivision ordinance is going to regulate how these, you see how this building's kind of narrow? It's going to regulate the division of these pieces of property and some of those construction standards. And then the CIP is going to regulate all this other infrastructure that goes in place and serves. So with all that said, again, we have our four types of juris- of authority. We have our legislative, so that's city council, they have the authority to adopt zoning text amendments, ETAs, zoning map amendments, ZMA's. Uh, conditional use permits, policies, budgets, they have that authority. There's ministerial authority, that's ministerial authority to approve subdivision plaits, site plans, condit- uh, COs. That's staff, that's you all to a certain degree with, with the subdivision plaits. There is, you know, not as much, but you can have some discretionary authority. So the authority to pass waivers or mod- like a parking waiver, but that needs to be built into the code. It's not something you see as much. And of course, you have your companions over at the BZA, Board of Zoning Appeals. And they have that quasi judicial authority to hear appeals to the zoning ordinance. So those are your different authorities. And just realizing that, you know, staff and planning commission, we live kind of more in this area. We don't make the policies, but we might draft the policies, we might draft the ordinances, we might create these things. But really, we have to convince the elected officials to adopt those. So with that said, there's a concept of vertical versus horizontal consistency. So you can have the greatest comp plan in the entire world. But if you don't actually have this, the, the zoning and subdivision and zoning map in place. If it's not aligned with your capital improvements program, then it's a really nice-looking document, but that's all it is, it's nothing else. Cause the plan, once you complete the plan, you finish it, adopt it, you feel pretty good about yourselves. You should, that's a tough process. But you've only gotten to the start line, you haven't gotten to the finish line. You've just said, this is what, what, what we want to do, but you haven't done it yet. This is how you do it, with the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, your investments, your programs, your initiatives. That's how you actually do it. So you, you need to have that implementation piece there. Um, conversely, you could have a great zoning ordinance, but if it's not tied to any policies, and you don't have any infrastructure there to help support it. It's, it's not going to do you a whole lot of good. Again, it's just going to be a nice document, but that's all it's going to be, it's not going to actually do anything for you. So you need to have this vertical consistency here. Um, I'll give an example of a community, um, I don't use names of communities, but there's a community, uh, that was in a coastal area. They had recurring flooding in an, in an area, coastal flooding. So they said, we, we're, we're going to, our policy is, we're going to stay away from this area, we're going to retreat from this flooding area. Good policy. But then, they built a load of infrastructure in the area that they were retreating from. Does that seem like a good idea? No. Uh, so that would be a vertical consistency issue. They said, our policy is to retreat from this spot, but what we did is we invested a lot of infrastructure in that same spot. So, um, you have to really make sure that you have, that they're all aligned vertically. And then also horizontally too. So, uh, a different community gave me a call, they adopted a brand-new zoning district. Were really excited about it. People had been asking about it the whole time, provided like just the right character for that neighborhood. An applicant came in, told- An applicant came in, to apply for that rezon. The rezoning got approved, the ZMA. It got to site planning. And whoopsie, the subdivision ordinance doesn't allow for that type of design that they want to do. So that's a horizontal issue, there's a law that is inconsistent with a law, so they can't actually do that thing that they adopted and spell that timeline. You can have policies undermine policies. You might say, we have an affordable housing policy, we want more affordable housing for our resident, for our residents, but we want to restrict new growth and not allow for any new additional supply of housing. That's going to, that doesn't line up well, so you're going to have your policies undermine your policies. So just, it's one thing you have to be aware of. And since I'm on a roll here, I'll go on into also, there is a difference too between problems and conditions. So as you're thinking about this and go through your comp plan, and then how your zoning is going to tie into that, and how your subdivision ordinance and your investments and so forth. Just really trying to think through, what are the problems you have in the community and what are the conditions? I'd say that a problem has a solution. Problem is usually on a local level, and there's something you can do to solve that and to eliminate the problem. You might have a problem, you have a problem intersection, you can improve it with a new design, solved, no more accidents. You might have, you talk about access on that property, you might have lucked out that one time, but you're concerned about the future, created new ordinance, it's adopted, done, problem solved. Problems are great, you can solve them. Conditions have no solution at all, none, there's nothing you can do about it, it's a condition. Anyone have arthritis?
I haven't reached that age yet.
I've got it.
I do.
Yeah, I was about to say it started.
And it hurts. Now you can take some medication to make it feel a little bit better, but at the end of the day, you still got arthritis. So I don't know if you, anyone here is getting older? Aging every moment as we here? So like, that's a condition, like we all age. Now you can do things to mitigate it, you can work out and eat well, which clearly done very well with doing that. But there's things you can mitigate that, but you can't solve that, that condition, that's just, it is what it is. Now, conditions on a local government level are usually things that are bigger national forces. There's many types of these forces. One is demographic, there's big demographic changes, communities who deal with that all the time. Try this one on, of some communities will say, our kids, we'll raise them, we'll educate them, and then they go to college and then they're gone. And how do we bring our kids back? You know, that might just be a global or a national demographic trend of just, that's what that cohort is doing. They're moving away, they're looking for job opportunity, and that's what they're looking for just isn't at home right now.
I have a question.
Yeah.
To that point, like say for instance, like an area like Richmond, like a Richmond native, who goes off to school, but then is like, well, I mean, home has good jobs.
Yeah.
So I'm just going back home. How can we make that good problem here to where we wouldn't have to run across, we could easily address that issue?
Well, and again, you have to be careful with the terminology of a problem or condition of, I would argue some communities, you can't. They're just not set up to create those jobs to bring those folks back. It's just, it's just, it's not, the market isn't going to bear that, it's not something you can do. But you can attract other people, you can make, you know, you can be the best version of what you, what you are.
That's my jam.
Yeah.
So it is a condition that people leave and look for work. But the problem that we have is we don't make the jobs that are available in Waynesboro, known to the people that might not be the ones that are going to go out and that we can solve that problem by keeping them here. I ran on it. So it's, it's, it's a duality.
You're running for office.
The condition of, or you getting a higher education and then going out and looking for professional jobs elsewhere is a condition that happens all over the United States and preferably all over the world. But the problem that I see that we have in our locality is that we have opportunities available and we don't do a good enough job getting them available to people.
But you can have opportunities, but if the pay isn't there, the opportunity.
Can be there all it wants.
All it wants, we run, we run into that all the time at UVA where I want. We're, we're looking for project managers. Well, it's a state organization, they can only, they can only lay so many Benjamins on the table.
They lay plenty of Benjamins on the table, UVA pays good.
Nah. They are getting their, they are getting stomped by the outside when it comes to construction managers and projects managers. Give you a perfect example, we interviewed for some construction project managers, they offered the lady a salary, she took it, but she also had already gone for another interview with another company because her husband was being transferred to the Shawville area for his job. The other company called her, they, they offered her twenty percent more salary and laid sixty thousand dollars on the table as a signing bonus. The state cannot do that, and that's, you, like you just said, you can get the opportunity, but if you ain't got the Benjamins to back it up, all you got is opportunity.
Well, and that would go to one of those other forces, so we have demographic forces, you have economic forces. So the economy does what it does.
Yep.
And the market is what it is. So when two thousand eight, two thousand nine rolled around, a lot of communities were hit with a real condition. They can't do any, Waynesboro can't do anything to solve the global meltdown, but you can help mitigate, you can, in the comp plan, you can calculate what's, what's the economic diversity of the city. If it's not that diverse, I want to work on that and make that more diverse. And there's strategies you can put in place in order to help diversify that, help. There's efforts you can put in place to help with wages on, on that level. But knowing that on the economic side, what the industry pays, what the industry pays. So you just have to be aware of that. So demographic trends, we have our economic trends, we have our technological forces at play, like self-driving cars, drones, these things, internet, there's a lot of technological changes happening that affect us, and we have no control over those things. We have political, on that side too, there's political shifts that happen that are way bigger than us, way bigger than any one person, that's just larger and cultural. So people's preferences change. It used to be people preferred smaller houses, kind of these mill houses, and then at some point, people preferred much bigger houses, and then now like tiny homes are kind of a thing. So like, there's all these different conditions, these forces that are happening, the most important thing is just recognizing those. If your community doesn't recognize that this big force is coming, is on the horizon coming at you, the likelihood that you're going to get kind of stampede is pretty big. Yeah, keep in mind too, there's also, some of these conditions can be positive. I remember being at a conference, a city was really bragging about, you know, we had a downtown master plan and look what we did. This was in the early two thousands. Look what we did, our downtown's amazing now, because we put this plan in place. And I was like, well, maybe I'm a little cynical, but I was like, yeah, that's a good plan. But I could have about fifty other cities that had the same transformation at the same exact time. So you had a plan ready, which is great, but there was a larger condition at play, people were moving back downtowns in the early two thousands. So keep in mind that there are positive conditions, with those, you need to recognize them and take advantage of it. So those are opportunities, and then there are negative conditions, and those are threats. So how are we going to mitigate those threats and how are we going to take advantage of the opportunities? So those are our conditions. I'll throw another one in there, that's dilemmas, and that's when you face multiple bad options. And there's no good, there's nothing, you got nothing. You got five options in front of you, let's say three options in front of you, they're all terrible, terrible options. And you got nothing, you just got to figure out which one of these is the least bad. And sometimes good governance is just going with the least bad thing. And those are things that you're not cutting ribbons, you're not getting parades for you, but that's a great part of good governance, is just sometimes just picking, do the best kid in those dilemmas, so.
Picking the lesser of two evils.
Lesser of two weevils, that's right.
Picking the one that comes to park in the green light.
But I mean, it happens all the time in, in governments, is we're faced with, we have a bunch of bad options here, what, what's the best we can do here? I bring this up for a few reasons, one is you need to be aware of this. Two is, I've seen a lot of communities spend a ton of resources trying to solve a condition. They get frustrated, and they lose patience, and they start to lose faith in their process and themselves, and they're just churning away at something that has no, there's nothing you can do. You can mitigate it, you can adapt to it, but they're just wasting a bunch of money. And I've seen other communities just kind of give up on a problem when there's a very clear solution there, but they just kind of shrug their shoulders and like, ah, there's nothing we can do, and it's just life. So it's, it's frustrating seeing communities just kind of give up on something when there is a way to solve it. And it's frustrating to watch them just struggle to try to solve some, something that's unsolvable. And just, just something to be aware of when you're policymaking as, as you're going through that. And just, as mentioned before, like these forces, a lot of this is kind of waves coming at you, it's kind of like surfing those forces along. You know, also just, you know, keep it in mind that you just always have to adapt to it and that you really have to just kind of stay up on top of things of what are some of those demographic issues, these technological things? Comp plan's a good time to have that dialogue and figure that out. So where do things go wrong, I've hit on these already, but where things go wrong with the community is you have some of these vertical or horizontal inconsistencies, there's a lot of work put into the comp plan, a lot of work put into ordinance, a lot of work put into investments, but they're not connected. You're not going to get the results you're looking for if they're not all connected at one. And so, you know, looking at it this way, if your comp plan and future land use map don't align, that can cause a lot of problems. If your future land use map and your zoning map aren't aligned, they're not, you know, you're not working towards it, that can cause you some problems. If you're making zoning decisions, but you're not thinking about the zoning map and how it all comes together, that causes problems, problems have solutions. You know, your zoning has to be tied to your comp plan, or should be. As I mentioned before, your subdivision ordinance and your zoning should be consistent with each other and, you know, with the comp plan. And your CIP, so any one of these points are little failure points, any one of those points, if you have a failure in it, that's, that can cause a lot of issues in the community. And it's really hard to get all those things to work together. So there you go, that was the end of that PowerPoint in terms of the slides, but I know we have about ten minutes here, but nine minutes, but happy to chat about any one of these issues or something else that's on your mind.
So I have a question. When, when you talk about possibly running into those failure points, what is the best way to take that into consideration when you're talking about the interconnectivity of the comprehensive plan with possible adjustments that you're making to things that once connected well together, but ensuring that it stays connected well together?
Yeah. I mentioned before, I think it's nice for the planning commission to have an, any annual meeting, just to kind of, and to have an annual report, it's a good practice to have if you don't, if you don't already do it, of just, you know, what you've done that year, what you plan on doing next year, have a work program for yourself. I think part of that, I think it's good to review, to take a look at your comp plan once a year at least. You need to update it every five years, state code says that, state code says you need to have a comp. But you can review it every year, you can just take a look and say, hey, you know, is there anything here worth looking at? Everything starts with the comp plan. That's why too, I think, as you go through the year, just flag any issues you're seeing with your ordinances, anything else. I'm a big believer that the comp plan shouldn't just be a static document, but like at least have like a PowerPoint, not a PowerPoint, an Excel spreadsheet with your actions laid out and just track your progress throughout the year and just show it, what have you advanced on? And one of those items might be to, you know, track the performance of your zoning, there's ways to do that, performance of your other processes you've put in place. So I mean, I think it's a continuous effort, so just always monitoring those things.
Is there a comprehensive plan online? It is.
And I don't believe the comprehensive plan that's out there takes into account the industrial park over where Northwood Grumman is going in.
Well, so the two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan, I would say looks more like a strategic plan. It's not, it's not like a lot of traditional comp plans. And then it didn't update the future land use map.
Yeah.
So that's a two thousand eight document. So, you know, our hope with this updated comp plan is kind of bringing all those things together because the two thousand eighteen update kind of looks and operates more like a little bit more of a short-term kind of strategic plan. I mean, it still has projects out about ten, fifteen years, but less like a traditional comp. Still a lot of great benefit in it.
Yeah.
The great thing, but it didn't touch the future land use map and updating kind of all of the land uses.
Yeah, because I think at the time that was done, the connector road wasn't even part of that from Coles out to Linderhurst.
I think that road is dotted on our future land.
Oh, is it dotted?
That is a future road, so that was back in two thousand eighty, but yeah, now we're seeing it being constructed.
Yeah.
That was all I had.
Okay.
But going back to something Kenny said, when, as we revamp the comprehensive plan, you don't want to drive people away, because you want the tax base that the houses are going to bring in, you want the tax base that the industrial park over there is going to bring into the city.
Well, if you believe, and I have yet to be convinced, that it doesn't take twenty-five years for a four-bedroom, two-bath house to pay for itself in terms of service. I would love to know the real answer to that on a Waynesboro level.
Yeah.
Right, when I went to work for a developer when I was nineteen years old, cutting the grass on his new developments in Prince William County, he told me that their tax rate up there, which was much higher than ours at the time, it took twenty-five years for a four-bedroom, two-bath house to pay for the services it received if they had two school-aged children. So that's the, that's one of the fallacies, or one of the things that I, that concerns me about the notion that I think, that's a notion that I think may be a fallacy, and I'd love to know about new development, the new residential development, and seeing the city, everybody says, yay, yay, taxes. But at what, you know, for who? For us now?
I would, I would.
For the people that live here in twenty-five years?
So that's a question that tied in to kind of what I was wondering, when you brought up the capital improvement plan and the capital improvement budget. As far as that goes, I know you can't, you can't request proffers, but in, in having, you know, potential proffers to capital improvement plans for large developments, how does that, you know, how does that play out in other areas? Like, you know, do they just, you know, put in, and then it goes into like a trust for a capital improvement plan for expansion on high school that is going to, you know, take X amount of dollars? You know, is, is, is that how that works sort of?
Yeah, so what now, let me back up a little bit here of, so communities in Virginia do still take cash proffers, that's kind of.
We just can't ask for them.
You, well, you, you, you can have a.
You can have a cash proffer policy.
Okay.
And, yeah, and I'm still not super clear on the lines of that one, you can't ask for proffers, and yet you can have a cash proffer policy. I need to find an answer to that one, but you can. And so some, what some communities will do is they'll make that calculation. So they'll say, they'll take the cost of all their services, and they'll look at like all their households, and they'll break it out to come up with a formula.
I mean, say it ended up being on a projected four hundred unit development, that it's fifteen hundred dollars per unit that would have to go into a capital improvement plan. And that would be conditional upon the sale of the unit, so you wouldn't be laboring to. Um, and that would be conditional upon the sale of the unit, so you wouldn't be laboring the, the manufacturer, the home, the developer, to pay that upfront. But as, as homes were bought, or you said, you know, after eighty homes were bought, or a hundred homes were bought, you have to make the first, you know?
Yeah.
But that's just something to keep in mind, knowing that, um, while our schools are able to take off development theoretically, that, um, that we're building for, knowing that that is also gonna expedite the need for capital improvements later, if that's something.
Yeah, and I, and to be clear, I have no idea. I'm not saying that that statement is true or not. I'm saying that's enough.
Well, and I would, I would think.
About how, they're taking twenty-five years.
Something.
And it's a piece of information I would love to have.
Well, and, and that's where, as planning commissioners, when you don't have all the information, you kinda feel like you're, you know, doing some blindfolded archery here. You're just not sure, I think this is right, but I'm not really sure. Um, but that's all, that's all in the comp plan process. That's where you can really figure that out of. You should be able to figure out, what's your growth rate? You should be able to project or forecast, whichever one you wanna do, out into the future and figure out, okay, how many people, how many households can we expect? Um, what's your housing stock look like? So how many homes will we need to house these, these folks as they're moving in? What types of housing will they need in terms of number of beds? Like, all this, then you're gonna build your ordinances around that. You build your CIP around that. You, you should actually have a pretty good idea of what your costs are for your services and infrastructure. You have a pretty good idea of what your growth rate is. And when you put those together, you should have an idea of what are the costs for the new services and infrastructure to serve residents at an acceptable level of service? You should have some confidence level in what those dollar figures are. And that's, that's what really gives you the justification for your CIP, for your zoning, for everything else of, what can we handle in terms of population and business with our services, infrastructure? What can we expect? How do we accommodate that? What does that cost? And that's when you get into really good governance there, 'cause you're really, you're getting those dollar figures down.
And that would come in during the new comp plan. If we were figuring that out, we would kind of work on what, you know, as we're rebuilding a new comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Right?
Sorry.
Well, on your numbers, uh, from, from what I hear in our area, it's ten to fifteen years before they break even. And then if that house is sold, the clock starts ticking again.
Yeah, and I, you know, I just, that's, that's one of several concerns that I, I had about new development, right? It's, it comes in and it's built, it connects the city to a city water, the kids go to city schools. Not to bid the police and the fire department have to go out there, right? Like, these are all, and, and I understand, like, there's some fundamental tension here, right? Because we're talking about limiting people's property rights, right? Which are like, you know, and that's something that I'm concerned, I'm concerned about, right? On the one hand. On the other hand, I do feel like these, we're, developers come in and they take advantage of us, of services that you and I have already paid for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some of us more than others, right? Like, I've lived here for seven, eight years now. So, you that have lived here forever have contributed way more than I have. And so how do we, the people that come in, the day they hit the door, they expect to have those services. So how do we make sure that the developers, who are taking advantage of those services to, to make money, are contributing their fair share, or at least contributing something instead of just taking it out of our taxpayers' pockets?
So I, I think that, like, doing, having a, a, like, the proffer ordinance or whatever, policy, that would make sense.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the cash proffer thing can be controversial.
Yes, very much so.
People that look at it like a stick-up game.
Mm-hmm.
I think.
Well, and, most other states, they don't, well, one, I mentioned before, unique, Virginia's unique in a lot of ways. And most states will use something called impact fees. And impact fees, well, different than proffers, 'cause you can require them. There's no negotiation, there's no funny wording here. It's just to say, for every new unit, the impact fee is this amount, and you pay it at the time of the building permit. That's just what it is. And that money goes into a pot of money, into a pot within that service area, and the money goes into that service area. Boom. So that, um, you know, Virginia, I think, still has the, the impact fee, but it's written in a way where it's, it's so cumbersome, I think only one community does it, and it's just not. But there are other, there are other funding strategies out there. You have, uh, tax increment financing. You can have special taxing districts. I mean, there's loads of other financing tools that you can use and put in place on top of zoning. Just separate, separate strategies you can use. So you can put like a, a TIF, you can put in CDA, all sorts of things.
Is, is that something that council would have to approve before we can put an overlay on that?
Yeah, that, that would, council would have to approve that, like, with a TIF district as an example. And then you would basically define the area, you'd set a base year. For tax increment financing, as you put your capital investments in there, it's gonna drive up property values. And you take the difference from the baseline to the new assessed value. And that difference you use to pay off the bonds for the infrastructure. So, um, just as an example, I'm, that's, I'm just pulling that one out of the air of just, there's cash proffers, but some communities kind of put all, all their eggs in that one basket. And there's a few things. One is, in order to get the cash proffers, you need someone to actually rezone. Um, you can't get it otherwise. And it might be better to just have a good zoning ordinance, that someone could do good work by right. But, there's these other tools you can use too that can help finance those things. It's good to have like good robust, make, cash proffers might be part of the equation, but maybe there's other tools there too, which you can also. I always, this whole discussion, always the Great British Bake Off, if you watch that show. But it's all about, it's like you're, with this, like, you're baking a pie, and you have to have the right ingredients and the right measure of every one of those ingredients. And you have to put it together the right way. You can take all the ingredients, just throw it into a bucket, and just like, here's the cake. But like, you haven't baked it, you haven't gone through the right process. So it's all about like proper measure of each tw- of each ingredient, and how it's all mixed together is really kind of the art that goes behind it.
And this was definitely helpful.
Yeah, you, I hope, I hope this was helpful to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just waiting for the power to cut out again.
Yeah, I know. It gave me a little bit of.
It was, it was as soon as I turned on the road, I heard boom. I'm like.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought, I thought I fainted or something, make sure they didn't hit it lightly.
So that's why they didn't set up a chair.